So, uh, be with us, give us wisdom in this meeting and, uh, thankful for living in this country, uh, all the people that's overseas fighting for us. I just thank you all for your name. Amen.
Attention, salute, pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's good to see everyone out this evening and, uh, we'll get started off with, uh, Melissa, Ledbetter with the Imagine National Library.
What would you like me to stand?
Wherever, since the country's nowhere, we move. But he, she can, he went to the middle of the track.
Um, this is not what needs to be signed, but, um, for those that don't know, Carol Lee Foreman, when she worked through the city, um, helped me organize the Imagine National Library. Dolly Parton started it because her father never knew how to read and they watched his children and how he left early in the morning with his little green lunchbox and went and worked hard for the family. So, Dolly Parton started this program and we started it here in Rainesville. It set no cost to our residents' children. Now, it is only for Rainesville residents that I work it for. And so, we've, we've got money in our account. We're doing good. Um, it ranges because it's from infant to five years. So, you know, when a child turns five years, they graduate from the program. So, it, it fluctuates at some point. We can never tell exactly how mu- how many children we serve. But right now, it's around eighty children in Rainesville. I haven't pushed it in a while. I probably will here in a few. Um, I get nervous about the money just because we do go off of, um, Sandra Livingston, House Rep, uh, Ledbetter, and then of course, AMRB that's always been big supporters. I'm only asking for five hundred dollars for the grant. This is, um, free money. Nothing that any of the mayor and the council has to do. I took it over when Carolie left us and managed it. So, I enter all the children's information. It's nothing that the employees of the city does. What happens is if we're awarded this grant, the money will come from AMRB. We'll find out in October. We'll get a check to the city and then Carolie then sends it back to AMRB that partnered with us so that we're under a 501(c)(3) C. So that if anybody, any businesses or anybody wants to donate money, it's tax adaptable. So, that's pretty much it in a nutshell. It's done electronically. So, I printed off the form, but if it's approved tonight, then I'll just bring my laptop with all of the information entered in for you to electronically sign it.
It's a very good program, uh, grandson's in it.
Yeah.
But, uh, we had to go through Tennessee, our address, to get it. And he's got his first book this week. So, I think it's a good program.
Well, yeah, and I didn't even say, for those of you that don't know what the program is, it's age-appropriate books that are sent and mailed to the child. It's not to the parents. So, it's exciting for them and it's doing carriage literacy and the relationship between the child and the, the mother or the father.
So, we'll speak about, I'll bring it up and vote on it tonight and power it to sign it and then we'll move forward with that.
Right, that's good.
Okay. I don't know, we get into the council, maybe we'll do that.
Okay.
Ms. Sonia Pittman, talking about road paving.
Right. Mr. Mayor, city council members, I appreciate the opportunity to be here and speak with you this evening. Um, I didn't attend your last meeting, but I saw, um, in some of the newspaper articles and I went back and I watched the video and I saw where a great amount of money was set aside to pave and resurface roads in Rainesville. Um, I can't remember the exact amount now, but it was a lot of money. Okay. The reason I'm, I want to talk about this is because in 2008, the street I live on and several other people, um, resurf- uh, didn't resurface, they brought the road up to specs so that it could be, um, paved and it was up to the city specs. So, that was done and that cost each resident on the road put in nine hundred dollars to have that done. Now, the adminis- this was two administrations ago when this first started happening. So, um, what happened is we sort of fell through the cracks. While we're patiently waiting for our road to be paved, nothing's happening. Okay. So, that when we start asking about it and what's going on with it, we're given multiple excuses about it. I haven't heard anything valid. I haven't heard anything quoted from the law. But we've, we've just been brushed off over and over. Right now, they're building a new subdivision, Graceful Acres, right across the road from where we live. Every street around us is paved or gonna be paved. We're right in the middle of Rainesville and we can't get our street paved. We have a fire hydrant on our street. We have bell delivery. We have, um, trash pickup on our street. But for some reason that I do not understand, it seems like we have just been treated like we're the enemy for the past few years. And, um, there's also Ivy Acre, Ivy Branch, and the fact that the, we were zone agriculture, but the city sold building permits to builders on lots less than three acres. We, and, and that wasn't supposed to happen. So, everybody else seems to be getting what they want except us. We cannot get our road paved. Now, the, the specs on the road have changed now. We're in 2017 and the specs on the road have changed. I don't know what they are, but of course, the time has passed. The road that we prepared for it, got the specs up on it, is not, is, is not up to specs anymore. And nobody on the road is willing to spend any more money for something that might not happen. So, um, there's something else I wanted to tell you. Oh, about Robin Lane. Okay, Larry Traver paid Robin Lane and then de- deeded it to the city so the city would keep it paved or resurfaced. Um, we were told that the cul-de-sac that would be paved at the end of our street had to be a hundred feet wide. Two people have measured Robin Lane the past few days. Their cul-de-sac's only seventy-five feet wide. So, it seems like, um, rules and limitations are putting on us that don't apply to other people and we don't know why. We don't understand why. We want to see something done about that. Um, we were told by the previous administration that all that would take is a vote from the city council to get our street paved, is what we were told. And then, when it's brought to the mayor's attention, he, he said it couldn't be done, that he wasn't gonna go to prison for paving our street. I don't know what that means or who would want to put him in prison for paving our street. But I would like to have some answers about that, about our road being paved. Why it's not being paved. At this point, you know, like I said, we're not willing to put any more money into getting a road up to specs like it was. And we had it ready to be paved and everybody was patiently waiting to, for it to be paved. The people we bought our house from told us that the road is gonna be repaved and it's gonna be paved.
You wanna address that, Mayor? You want me to? Or you want me to? Whichever.
Well, I came on council in 2002 and the, the ordinance that was up, you know, like the pavings, strict paving ordinance was at tar and gravel and, uh, fifty foot wide with a cul-de-sac of sixty foot at that time. And then, over the period of years, it has changed a little bit. Uh, the, the most recent one that we just did, did a few weeks ago, now, some of these roads that, that was brought in, in the last few months, uh, don't fall under that last one because that, that one was brought up, you know, and voted on by the council, but those others were already in process. Um, now, that's the one that's a hundred-foot cul-de-sac that we're talking about. And so, you know, uh, the, the previous road was not.
So, the specs changed?
The specs have changed. And the reason the specs have changed is because of school buses turning around on them, uh, sanitation trucks turning around on them. A sixty-foot cul-de-sac is just not hardly big enough for those vehicles to turn around. Um, the reason it changed from asphalt, I mean, from tar and gravel to asphalt is to make it a, a better road for the future. Uh, if you have a, if you have a, um, a contractor that comes in here and does tar and gravel on the road, uh, two or three years, that tar and gravel is, is, is wore pretty bad, you know, especially with the big trucks on it. If you do asphalt and you do it right, then it's a good possibility that they're gonna get fifteen years or better out of that road before we have to go in there and redo it. We're, we're in the maintenance business. We're not in the building of the roads building, of that side of the business. We, 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 we get tax rate needs to try to, to try to get those roads.
So, you're not gonna be paving any more roads in Rainesville?
We're gonna resurface, yes.
But you're not gonna pave any?
We're gonna resurface, yes.
That's what it means, resurfacing and then it's paved.
We resurface as paving, right?
That is paving, yes it is. Yes. And we're gonna spend quite a few thousand dollars this year. But half of it, well, I'm, I'll, I'll put this, half of it is, is grant money that we're getting to help pave some of this. It's not, and we have to do it exactly like, if we're getting grant money or whatever from the state, then we have to do it exactly like they want it done. And those roads are already been set aside. When we carry that information with the state, then they, they assign that paving to these roads and we can't deviate from that. We have to do exactly what they say.
Well, so that still doesn't.
We also have another problem, issues.
What's that?
Uh, we have a garbage truck that don't have a cul-de-sac to turn around and that's actually a private road. And, you know, the, the safety director may have to wind up getting involved because that garbage truck is having to back, back down that road and that's unsafe condition. And it's not a road. It, it is a private drive.
He only recently started doing that. He backed into my driveway for twelve years.
Do I not?
He backed into my driveway and turned around for twelve years.
He, he, that's an unsafe condition. That, that's the reason for the cul-de-sacs. For the trucks to turn around and have a place to make it safe. And to stay on the road. I mean, uh, I can get, I, I went into the house one day and worked on TV and come back out and the kid had put a T-bike, bicycle behind my truck and I run over it and I bought a bicycle.
Why was it allowed for twelve years?
The same way.
Why was it allowed for twelve years?
Well, he was a little.
Why was it allowed for twelve years?
You're not supposed to do that. You're supposed to stay on the right way, sit in the right way.
Why isn't that the issue?
Well, what we may need to do is move them out to Maple. That way, y'all can move them care of my life.
That right there is what I'm talking about. That right there.
That might be a same.
We, when we, when we have a, an issue, it's like, oh, well, okay, then your garbage is gonna have
to go out to Maple Avenue. We're gonna inconvenience you because we're not gonna accommodate you. That's what you're doing. That's, it, isn't that called coercion?
Yeah, you need to, sorry. Um, and the time's up. It, it, we'll, uh, we'll, we'll think about it, but, uh.
There's nothing to think about, Mayor. Let me tell you something. We've got the city engineer down here. He don't, he's been writing spec for this city for a long time. And he said, 2008, he followed the spec. He did not follow the spec. If he did, he would have passed that street to be a city street.
So, he never thanked us? No, it was brought up to specs. At that time, the specs weren't.
Our city engineer inspected it and he says, "No." How can he say this? Are you engineer?
You know, some of them were told. That's what we were told.
No, I hope.
Yes, we were.
City engineer, if this time's off.
By you, by you!
That's enough, sir. Calm down. Please. Let's, let's, let's be calm.
City engineer said, "Yes, it's the spec. We, we take it." And I tell you what I'm gonna do, Mayor. We're going to, uh, table this and from now on, you're not allowed to come up here and talk about your street anymore. That means as long as this administration, the next three and a half years is left, you cannot come here and talk about that street anymore. That's a private law. We table this.
Mr. Bijan.
Nah, I'm gonna fire him. I wouldn't go on fire.
But don't. You got your own board.
This is a.
Councilman To Harry.
You just went.
You can't just like, so I can't come and speak as long as she.
They can't come and speak and they can't talk about that road anymore. We table it.
Okay, just wait.
Councilman To Harry.
No.
I want to say something to him because he said a lot to me.
I'll give you one minute.
I am one of many, many people that's tired of your rudeness and your inappropriate and unprofessional behavior and your temper tantrums.
That's what you're, you're, your, your thinking.
And you cannot tell me that I can't come up here and talk about my street because you're gonna hear from me until that street is.
But we table it. You cannot talk anymore.
Oh, you can't tell me that. I'm a citizen of Rainesville. You can't tell me that I can't come up here and talk.
But you cannot talk about that street anymore. We'll not table it tonight.
I don't think you have the power to do it.
That's the law, man. That's the law.
Let's move forward. Let's go.
That's the law.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is not the last. You are here. You may table it, but we're not table it.
Take it to higher up there. Make a meeting.
Okay, make a meeting. Um.
Make a meeting.
Okay, uh, we'll move forward with the meeting. Uh, Mr. Ringenstein. Okay, if you want to go ahead and, and explain about the, uh, the loan.
Yes. Thank you, Mayor and Mr. Uh, fellow members of the council. I'm David Ringelstein. I'm a bond lawyer with Boston, being a law firm in Birmingham, Alabama. We are assisting Cornerstone School here in the city with refinancing existing debt that they already have borrowed to build some improvements out of their school. Uh, they're basically taking advantage of a cheaper interest rate environment. They're not borrowing, getting any new money for any new buildings. They're just refinancing their existing debt they have now. The debt they have now is with a, uh, local bank. Um, the, uh, you all approved that loan. This loan is identical to that loan. It's not publicly traded bonds. There's not any securities being issued. It's just private placement loan. We are required by the federal tax laws to come and request and obtain your approval uh, because the loan will be taxed exempt. Cornerstone is an Alabama nonprofit corporation and by virtue of being a nonprofit corporation, it's eligible to borrow money on the tax exempt basis, which basically means they qualify for a cheaper interest rate than what they would if they just walked into the bank and said, "We need a loan." In order for it to be tax exempt, they're required to use a conduit issuer. Uh, and the conduit issuer is the Educational Building Authority of the city of Rainesville, which you guys, uh, incorporated back in 2008 or so. And that has been the issuer of this debt for the past two months, ever since the improvements were built. Even though the debt is technically issued by the Educational Building Authority of the city of Rainesville, the city nor the Educational Building Authority is responsible for one penny. Entire repayment of the loan is that of the school. So, the city nor the Educational Building Authority is liable in any way in connection with the debt. We're just simply complying with federal tax laws consistent with what they've done on their two previous ones that y'all approved. The resolution that we have in front of you is basically a resolution which authorizes the mayor on behalf of the city to sign this certificate stating that we, uh, are refinancing that debt. The other requirement is that the federal tax laws require us to conduct a public hearing, uh, which we did at three o'clock today and ran a notice in the newspaper. I can get Miss Frazier a copy of that notice, but no one intended, so no one came to object or, you know, be against the loan. So, the short and the skinny is basically to ask you all to consider and hopefully approve the resolution which authorizes the mayor of the city to, uh, approve the refinance of the existing loan, which you all have already approved before back in 2013. So.
Dave in Birmingham.
Yes, sir.
Does a little bit of coal mine stuff too, don't he?
Do what now?
He act- he does a little insurance business with coal mine.
I don't know. I don't know that, that that might be the case, you know. So, there are a few coal mines around Birmingham, that's for sure.
I think he should come and see us all.
Okay, you bet. And I'm certainly here to answer any questions if any of you have them. It should be, like I said, y'all are not liable in any way in connection with the loan. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. Everybody get it.
Thank y'all.
Uh, I'm gonna go ahead and announce this right here. Um, we had a public hearing the last council meeting pertaining to the vacating of alleyways and, uh, we had to kind of schedule that for July 3rd, okay. Uh, the attorney's gonna be out, out of the office for, uh, a couple of weeks and so, we're going to publicize that. Uh, we hadn't put it out in the papers yet, so we're going to put it, put it out in the paper. We're gonna do that August the 7th at four o'clock and we'll, uh, the way we're gonna handle that, we've got three different, uh, alleyways that we're going to, uh, be discussing. We will take each alleyway and discuss each alleyway one at a time, uh, so everybody can talk and be for or against. And then, if, in, after that, after that, uh, public hearing in the, in the council meeting, uh, following that, we will vote on those alleyways at that point. So, we'll do that August the 7th at four o'clock, the public hearing, and then the council meeting at five o'clock and we'll vote on them. So, just wanted to kind of clear that up. Um, because we had kind of scheduled that for the, July 3rd. Uh, another thing, uh, I don't know exactly how this got in there, but, uh, at the last, at the last council meeting, we talked about paving a little bit and we talked about the amount of money that we were gonna pay. And, and the amount of money that we're paving is, uh, around five hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in paving, possibly real close to that. Okay? Out of that five hundred and ninety thousand, we're pretty well gonna be able to absorb all of it, but, uh, right off the bat of, uh, except for two hundred and forty thousand dollars. And that's where we're getting that grant money from. So, what we have to do in this is we have to borrow that two hundred and forty thousand dollars, uh, from the bank till we get the project completed. Then, when the project's completed, then they will turn around and pay us back and we'll pay the bank back. Okay? So, so really and truly, when we get this paving project done, the way I, we've got some, uh, two different grants, two different directions, uh, we will actually not owe any money at the end of this paving project. So, uh, it, it works out real good. Now, it was said in the meeting the last time that we were borrowing four hundred and eighty thousand dollars for paving the project. That was probably just something that, you know, when you kind of add it all up, it's really five hundred and ninety-nine thousand. Uh, but when we get through, we won't owe anything on this, on this paving. So, I just wanted to kind of clarify, you know, that everybody understands that we're gonna borrow at two forty, then turn around as soon as we get the grant money for that, we'll pay it back. So, just want to clear that up.
So, clear up where, now, where specifically is the other money coming from besides the, what fund does it come from?
Uh, the tax, uh, the gas tax is paying for part of it, uh, and then, uh, sanitation's gonna pay for some of it and we're, you know, because we use our garbage trucks and up down the road every day and so, that's where that money's coming from. And, uh, then we have a, another fund that we put money into it every year to try to build up a little bit of money in it and we've got some set aside to, uh, to pay for it, to take out of that fund. So, that's where, I just want to clear that up a little bit. Anybody got any questions on that? If not, we'll, we'll take a twenty-minute break. Or, y'all want to go over your stuff? Let's go over it. Okay. All right. Um, I'll just start it off. I've got one thing to bring up tonight and we're doing that LED lighting project and, uh, we have had to do a test run on all the lights, different kind of lights that we're gonna put in. And that test was done this past week. So, um, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a, a recommendation that we move forward with the project. And, uh, you know, this, this project is a, is about a hundred and thirty thousand dollar project. Well, I've, we've done the numbers on this and this is gonna save us over ten years uh, around the one point two million dollars in the city of Rainesville. So, we, we've got an investment of a hundred and thirty thousand and a savings over ten years of, of one point two million dollars, which I think is a, is a real good idea to do. And that's the reason we're doing this, is anytime you can save that kind of money over the long haul like that, I think it's good. And it, it's, it don't stop at ten years. It'll keep going, you know, like that. Uh, so I'll be, I'll be bringing up that. And, uh, so, Byron, you got something on the agenda?
Yeah, well, I think Sam's here with us. Uh, we ready proceed on with that. Sam, got that worked out on accepting the street down here. Him and I discussed it earlier about it had a little bit of an issue in the cul-de-sac about drains, but I think you got that worked out and resolved, didn't you?
I met with Mr. Keith, uh, after lunch today and asked him what he needed to do. You know, I was talking to him. He called his engineer and he said he'd get them out, uh, revise them out this afternoon, but he'd get it recorded and I told him it hadn't been recorded. It'd be public information. So, I'll make a recommendation based upon stipulation when he gets that done.
I'll bring that to you. Then I have, uh, other thing. We're gonna have to house some more, uh, garbage cans. It's gonna be about sixty to fifty, that's the canisters. We were picking up a lot of new customers. That's a good thing because, uh, we're picking up a lot of new customers. We're making revenue. We're making some headway off of that. And, uh, and the other thing, you know, I, I just want to make mention that, uh, everything that's going on, we've been doing a lot of cleanup stuff for the Freedom Fest coming up. And the sheriff's department has sent the prisoners out here and worked in the park, cleaning it up. And, uh, I'd like to recognize them, thank them for their helping us out out here because they've been a big help. And, uh, then Anthony, one of our guys, has redone our, all of our shrubs and stuff out in front of the city hall, trimmed all them up out in front of the police station. Now, he's down to the tongue bowl, really doing a good job. I appreciate him. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Okay. That's awesome.
Um, Mayor, the only thing I have to not bring up is, uh, we gotta get these fire department, the fire department's gotta test these hoes. We do it every year. Um, Chief, uh, Chief Ratt got some other departments actually saving some money. It's gonna cost eighteen cents a foot. I think it was originally what, thirty-six cents or something?
Thirty-two, thirty-three, something like that.
So, the other departments can be like Pine Ridge, Shiloh, Savannah, just the neighboring towns. So, it's kind of helped us out, lowering the price on that. So, that's the only thing I'll bring up. Also, uh, I went to the Freedom Festival run Saturday and I gotta brag on Jerry. Jerry done a great job. There's a lot of people that showed up. Uh, that's actually my first time actually getting to see the run like that. That was pretty cool.
He showed up at Flip Flop.
Showed up at Flip Flop.
Did not run.
Did not run.
I ran up on the record, so I just, uh, I just want to give a cojones to Jerry and they done a great job for.
Well, you go ahead and take, Mayor. He rode the car.
Yes, I rode the car, yes. But cojones to them, they done a good job putting that on. That was awesome.
And what's awesome about it is all the, the people that benefit from it.
Hardly was it jammed. Everybody was. I mean, so.
Children, I've seen.
It's hard to get that many people who proudly is part of it. So, yeah, it was full.
And, and also, I want to thank Chief, the both Chiefs. They done a great job, uh, patrolling it while there was running, uh, keeping them safe. And I think there was a couple of mine that fell out that you guys attended to. You guys done a outstanding job. I want to thank y'all for that too. So, that's really all we got. Can't leave them out.
You have anything, Brett?
I'm gonna, I was talking with Chief earlier and we've been having some issues kind of with some of the jurisdiction problems. And I was gonna ask Sam, if you have or have access to, can you get us a jurisdictional map?
Chief, I gave Mr. Gibson two maps a couple of weeks ago. He's supposed to give you one of them. At his age, he's bad to forget.
Okay, well, I'll check with him in the morning then. I wasn't aware of that, Sam. Thank you.
Cause he and I are about the same age.
I'll get with him first in the morning. Thank you.
Yes, sir, I did. But, but if you need another one, we'll get.
I just need one that I can take to the sheriff's office into 911 because we're starting to work our jurisdiction now, so.
We had printer issues or plotter issues, but we finally got that.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips.
That's all I have.
Please, I'll do so you this one.
Yeah, uh. Officer Dean Watt, I think he said, the chief said, uh, his year coming up as far as, uh, yearlies race, I'll bring that up to go and play him on the, uh, regular basis of his, uh, rank. And but that issue with this, uh, street, which is, is a private road, right? Don't have a name, as far as we know.
Is Coach Brooks's driveway that they have an easement on, though? Is Coach Brooks' driveway that they have an easement on, though?
Is that called what?
It's called Maple.
Is that the main one?
Well, it can't be, it can't be, it can't be Maple.
No, 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 Maple is the main one.
Maple's the main road that goes down.
Well, when the fire truck went down and it caught on fire, they thought it was Maple and that's, that's where it happened.
We can't go, but they think this and they think that, okay? Law is a law and you're supposed to follow the law. That street is a private road, okay? What, what do you want me to call it?
This doesn't have a name on it.
It don't have a name, so what should I call it? A private road off of Maple?
I suppose, yes.
Okay, I'm gonna bring that in tonight, who, who gonna table this?
There's the original play, it was divided up, it was called-
Did it ever have a cul-de-sac period?
No, no.
I, I was on the council back then and I remember, I don't, I don't remember seeing a cul-de-sac period.
Well, I don't remember. It was about two years ago. But that was the original.
The original.
Can I look at, I've, I've seen it, I just, I just wanna see the original, you hear a lot, see a lot.
Go back.
All right, I'm not done yet.
Hold on.
Yeah, right there.
So it's a private road off of Maple Street.
Not really a road, it's an easement.
It's a fifty, it's a fifty-foot non-exclusive easement.
Fifty-foot non-exclusive easement off of-
Maple.
She's talking about nine hundred dollars, who knows?
I, I don't know that, I wouldn't-
That's what I, I'm just curious myself.
Okay, uh, the other thing I've got is the Chevy's Bridge Project. Uh, do you wanna update us on, uh, property?
Sure. Um, so I received a packet of information that had some appraisals. There was a full-blown appraisal, appraisal that had to be done for one of the tracks and that's been completed. And then there were waiver appraisals on the other tracks. And that's, they're sort of abbreviated appraisals that the property values under a certain amount. So those have been completed. And then we, um, the mayor had to sign some letters to send to DOT along with those packets.
We find that letter finally on someone's desk, so I'd like to take that.
Um, I think all those have been signed. And, uh, Mr. Gibson delivered them to DOT and ownership today because it was suggested to us that that might help speed things along if we didn't send it by mail. So the whole packet has been delivered and so I think the next step is DOT will, um, approve that and then the, um, right-of-way specialist, Mr. Weisner, can go ahead and send out the offer to the property owners at that point.
None of the tracks have been offered yet.
Correct, correct. That's, that's, that'll be the next step after DOT approves what we sent. And I'm not sure on the timeframe of how long that should take to, um, have that approved.
But they pushing in to put it on August letting?
Yes.
Because we don't have a letting in September because of the physical year. So if we don't let it by August, we have to wait two months after that. He puts us in October, end of October.
Right.
So, uh, anyways, the other weather we can, call me if you need any help. If I need to go gunners, we'll hand deliver, or my government, or whatever, let me know.
Okay.
Richard carried it down there today, I came in and signed them, and Richard carried it spread down there today.
Good, that's all I got.
So that weather can't say anything.
Well, I got something, I'll, I'll say, my suggestion is about this road situation. Is I say we form a committee, look into it.
Look into what?
I don't agree with you, Councilman.
Look into what?
I was on, I was on the council at the time that the road just got opened up. So if it's not brought up to standard-
The city engineer is telling you he's not accepted.
We're not gonna say other things.
What committee he talks to?
So you have an argument.
I don't want me on that committee. That's the end of the show.
Okay, we'll take a ten minute break.